I would just like to welcome everybody here for the forum. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm Anne Ravenstone. And our timekeeper today is Nancy Cervaca. And the way this is going to work is that each of the candidates will have a two-minute opening statement. After that, we will be pulling questions randomly out of, well, we've already pulled them, but they're sitting here out of the box. And you will each have two minutes to answer whatever the question is. And then we will end with a three-minute closing statement. Now Nancy is the timekeeper. She's going to ring this little bell when you have 20 seconds left to finish. And when your time is up, your time is up, you can't even finish your sentence. You're not supposed to even finish your sentence, which is the way it works. Okay? Oh, the other thing is that we will go in order, starting with this first time. We will start with Juanita, and then we'll do Richard, and then Dustin, and then Jeremy. The next set of questions, when we start the questions, then we will start with Richard, Dustin, Jeremy, and Juanita, so that each round, a new person is first to answer the question. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Do any of you have any questions? Or does the audience have any questions? All right, well, let's get started. We'll start out with our two-minute opening statements, and we'll start with Juanita.
Thank you for being here today. My name is Juanita Camillo. I am running for reelection for the Mountain Air Town Council. If I am elected, I promise to, I promise to listen and be there for you as I've had in the past. My decisions are always based on what I believe is right. I'll continue to be thankful to you for choosing me to serve, for choosing me to serve you, and I hope you support me in my reelection. Thank you.
Richard?
Good afternoon, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Joe Richard Thorpe. Everybody that knows me calls me Richard. I want to say a little bit about me. I was born in Debo, New Mexico, in 1953. I moved to Mount Air in 1956. And of course, I went to school here. And after school, I went to Houston, Texas. I stayed there a couple of years, came back to New Mexico, back to Mount Air. Stayed here a little bit, went back to California. And then I also stayed another couple of years or so, came back to Mount Air, New Mexico. Stayed here for a little bit, and I had to go out there to go work. And I worked there in construction. After that, I and my oldest were going to start school, so we moved to Mount Air. And that's when I got a job here with the Town of Mount Air. And I was here for 34 years plus. And here I am. And of course, I did want to say that I appreciate your vote if possible. And I did to do my best. And I tried my best, I think, as it is now. I've done my own decisions and my own, it's been my own thoughts. And another thing I wanted to know is I'm a polygraduate from Manizapulí. We've been going there since I started being a council member. And we got certified with Scuse's in 2019. And that's pretty much about it. But I just really want to say, this is my town. You guys are my people, my family, and my love. Thank you.
Just a reminder to all of you to speak directly into your microphone so that everyone can hear you. Dustin?
Yes, a little bit about myself. Graduated from here in 2004. Got away from here as quickly as I could because that was the thing to do. Move out of here, move to the city, go on to bigger and better. Very shortly after getting to the city, I decided I need to go home because this place is terrible. So I chose to come home and make my life here in Mount Air, the place I thought I wanted to get away from. And married my wife in 2010 here. We now have three children together. And I plan to be here until I'm buried here. This is my community. I love my community. And I'm not going anywhere. And I would be honored to serve my community on this town council. Thank you.
Jeremy?
Hello, my name is Jeremy Oliver. I'm not originally from Mount Air, but I moved here 10 years ago with my family. We were living in Albuquerque and realized that's no where to raise a family. So we moved back to a small town where my wife has grown up and loved so much. Since moving here, I've worked in different areas around town. Ancient cities, P A Tire, the gas station, Alamo Silver, Robert's Oil, Family Dollar. And then went to the correction facility until they closed. And then went back and was the manager of 7-Eleven for a while. And now I'm working with Orange County. So I've been entrenched in the community for the better part of the last 10 years I've been here. I now have six kids going through school. And that's what I want to make better, is this town for our children. I take my kids to the park regularly. And it's littered with trash and needles and broken alcohol beer bottles constantly. And it's always a safety hazard. There's another safety hazard that I don't see typically every day, but the speed that people come through this town, especially in the school zone. Statistically, more people die from people driving at excessive speed per year than get killed during home invasions. About 10,000 people died in car accidents based on excessive speed, while estimated 250 to 750 people per year die from home invasions. I think the police need to be out controlling their speeding more than just sitting around in the station waiting for calls of possible violence. Years ago, when I would always drop my kids off and pick them up in school when I had time, I always saw police officers stationed in school zones for speeding. The few times this year I have seen one, my wife has seen one. 100 kids die a year because of people speeding through school zones. 25,000 a year are injured.
Thank you all. We'll now start with the questions that people have submitted. We'll begin with Juanita, and then we'll start to alternate who starts. Well, okay. The first question is, please describe your view of the role of the local police department.
I think the role of the police department is to provide safety for the town that they work with. They are here not just working just for the council. They are working here for the public as a whole. My belief, I should put my beliefs in there. I believe that they are here to work for the Town of Mount Air, the municipality, and the surrounding area. They're not here just to work for the individuals, the individual councils that are sitting on their seat at the time that we're elected. I'm going to repeat myself, they work for everybody. That's what I feel the role here in Mount Air is to work for everybody in general, not just for individuals. Thank you.
Richard?
My role for the police department is I know that they're supposed to be here for our safety. They should be for the people. They should be a little bit more considerate when there's not someone. They should talk to them in a nice way and tell them exactly what it is. And we just got to deal with it. A person does wrong or whatever, that's where it's at. We've got to do what we've got to do. But I think that we should be able to trust a police officer to help us out in this town. That's about all I can say.
Dustin?
Can you repeat it one more time?
Please describe your view of the role of the local police department.
My view of the local police department, when I think of police, they are created to serve and protect. And I believe that's exactly my view on them. In our community, I see, I want a safe community. I want a community that your kids can ride their bike down the street. I want a community where you don't have to worry about the elderly people being home alone because somebody knows them and knows nobody younger is going to protect the home at any given time. I value them very much. I think they're severely underpaid. And I know the town probably doesn't have the funds to increase that. And I'm very thankful for the ones we do have, and hopefully when they continue to stay here.
Thank you. Jeremy?
I believe the role of the local police department is for public safety, as I had touched on in my opening statement. I'd like to see them patrolling more, less sitting. Because that's where, when you're seen and observed patrolling, there's going to be less crime, less traffic violations. Because, I mean, stop signs and speed bumps are good, but when there's no one out watching stop signs and speed bumps, people are still going to not stop, they're still going to go fast up until that moment of the speed bump. I have kids, they love riding their bikes, especially in the street if it's a nice flat spot to ride. And I have people lining up and down the road. I can't trust them to be out there by themselves. Well, not trust my kids, but trust other people paying attention. So I have to go sit outside and in the road. And anytime a car comes, I have to pull them off and make sure they're safe because people are still flying by, even absent these kids sitting at the road. I think the job of the police is to patrol, make a presence felt, make the public feel safe. And yes, when needed, respond to any emergency call of a potential home invasion or violent situation. But they also have a duty to patrol and make sure our streets are safe as well.
Thank you. I'm not sure, I can't remember if I said that for questions we will have 20 minutes. And I don't remember if I said it or not, but just wanted to clarify that. For all of the questions for this group, yes, overall. Okay, this time we will start with Richard. And the question is, how will you make Mount Air a better place?
I feel like making Mount Air a better place by, again, being here for the people, listening to the people, seeing what the people want. And of course, I think we could make Mount Air a better place by infrastructure. And by, I mean by that, we got a lot of gas lines, water lines, road lines, and streets that need repair. One of my main goals that I've been looking for, and that is also like the city park. I've been wanting to pour concrete on it for almost three years now. And that's the way I would make the town a little bit more.
Thank you. Dustin?
How would I make the town a better place? One of the problems, one of the major problems I see being involved with the schools is our younger generation growing up through the school system here. And when they get out of school, they don't go anywhere, they don't do anything. They fall into the wrong frames, and they go, start a downward spiral. And I would like to come up with something, do something for that age group when they're getting out of school, and give them somewhere to go, give them something to do, opportunities for jobs, help them in any way we can, so that maybe they go off to trade school or college, and one day decide to raise their families here and come back. And to have the infrastructure, you need the taxpayers. And you need productive taxpayers that have jobs and go to jobs and go to jobs on time and continue their employment. And I think that's where we're falling in the community right now, with the young people.
Thank you. Jeremy?
How will I make Mount Air a better place? One, infrastructure, and that's more than just roads and sewer and water. It also includes internet. A lot of jobs nowadays are home-based. Even before COVID, there was quite a few home-based jobs. Out here, there's not as reliable of internet. There's funds set aside for internet upgrades within the town. And the town working together to help bring in better internet and bring in better jobs. Better jobs, more people stay around. More people stay around, tax collections go up. With that, more money in the town coffers, more money for police, more money for parks, more money to reinvest into the community and make it a better place. So it all starts with the town's infrastructure.
Thank you.
I think, like my fellow candidates say, the infrastructure as a council and as a municipality, we are working on the infrastructure here for the Town of Mount Air. I believe we have gone out there to get grants. And everybody sitting here knows that it takes a while to get grants or whatever to fix the infrastructure. One of the things that I feel that is better for the town, right here Roosevelt and Citadel, is we're looking at those, but you've got to go to steps to be able to get that infrastructure going. I believe that before we start fixing like the gas, the water, we need to fix the underlying problem in our infrastructure, which is our gas and our water. Because what's the purpose of putting down better roads when we're going to have to go back and knock them down? There is a lot of things that could be put in place. It's not that we're not doing it, but it takes time to work to make the Town of Mount Air a better place. Which I feel, in my opinion, Mount Air is the best place to live. And we could better it, but I think we live in a great town.
Thank you. This time, we'll start with you, Dustin, and the question. What will you do about the drug problem in this town?
We would need to come up with some, something to raise funds or find funds to battle that because it is going to take money. It's going to take people that have maybe even been through that and came out of it to maybe even create a program where they head that up and they help people here that they know and they can relate to them on a level because they've been through that. And even further, they probably will know that person personally and be able to involve more of their emotions and their care into that act of helping an individual. And I believe that's one of our biggest problems. And I hope to see something like that come to this community.
Thank you. Jeremy?
I think the best way is prevention. Getting activities for the children, teaching the children the dangers of it. It's not going to stop everyone. But when children are more engaged, even the teenagers in other active-based sports and school activities or other activities in the community, they're going to be less likely to turn towards drugs and alcohol. And that's where the best action is prevention. Giving more prevention activities, more just other activities for children. I mean, the school does a lot for them, sports and everything else, but what about the children that aren't old enough for sports? You need to teach them young. A fifth grader, it's not going to be any less likely to do drugs than a sixth grader. It's just all opportunities and if they can get their hands on it, the crowd they're on. If they're involved in other activities, such as Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, which I know there's not really a lot of opportunities out here, or junior sports, they're less likely to be involved in drugs.
Thank you.
I think we need to get programs going as a municipality and as a school together. My belief is that you just, you can do, you can bring in all the programs that you want to help with the drug situation. My belief that it starts from the home. If they don't have a stable home, I'm not saying that the individual at home are in the drug scene, but I believe that drug prevention starts from the home. I'm not saying that whoever their family is, they're not doing. But my belief is that towns, the schools can do all the programs that they want. They can give them all the help they want. But I believe the first step is starting at home. The parents too need to jump in there and help the parent, the individuals with whatever help they need.
Thank you. Richard?
My view is, I think we have to add more police involvement where they get involved with these particular peoples. This way they can probably take them in, do whatever they have to do with them, maybe take them to some kind of program, and then from there, work with them, see what we can do to actually help them. Right now, I see a lot of, up and down the streets and this and that. I see no involvement from the police. The police are not there to help these people, get them off the street, and get whatever help is possible. So I think we need more police involvement on that. And then get them out there where they need to be, council, whatever it might take.
Thank you. This time, Jeremy, you'll start answering the question. What are your strengths that you bring to this council?
My strengths? I'm a current government professional in finance. I understand how finance and how important it is in government and communities, just in general. Having good finances is a solid base for a good-run business, government, anything. So that's what I can bring to this council, is a good base in government knowledge and finance.
Thank you. Juanita?
I believe my strength is that I've been here in the council for 20 years. I have seen the coming and goings that happens within the municipality. I'm, not that I'm saying that I know everything, but I think my strength is if someone comes to me and asks me a question, if I don't know the answer for that individual, Dennis knows how many times have I gone to him and asked questions when people, if I don't have the answers, I tell the individual, I'll get you an answer. And I do get an answer. I feel that if they come to me, that's my strength. I'll try to answer. And I've worked for the public for a long time, not just here as a sitting council person, but I have worked with parents and individuals from the school where I worked for 40 some odd years. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
My strength is working with the council, working with the people here in town. I've done this for 34 years, being with the public. And I know a lot about the public. I've been involved with the town council for going on four years now. And so altogether, I've been here 38 years, and I know quite a bit about it.
Thank you. Dustin? Dustin, sorry.
I believe my strength would be my heart. I love my community. I love raising my children here. I want the best community for myself and my children. And I'm willing to do whatever it takes to get this community to that place. And if this community is in that place, I'm not the only one that benefits from that. My family's not the only one that benefits from that. Everybody in the community gets something out of it.
Thank you. This round of questions, Juanita, you will start. The question is, what do you think about our police department?
I believe that they're doing a good job. I've been here for a long time. I have been sitting on this council that we have had policemen that have gone, come, and gone. We, in the past, we have had policemen that would just slap them on the hand and let's go. I believe that the present police force is doing a job. Some people might not believe that they're doing a good job, but I believe that they are doing a good job with what they have. And nobody, it doesn't matter which police force is sitting as a police officer, there's nobody that's going to say that they're doing a job the way they're supposed to be. Our police force have caused. But I believe that they're doing what they're doing. We've had police force that they just got here and they didn't like it and then left. I think, in my opinion, this police force has been the police force that has been here the longest. And I believe that I'm happy with the police force that we have here at the present time.
Thank you. Richard?
Well, I'm one in the ain't tapping with what the police is doing. First of all, they're not doing their job, in my opinion. Like I just mentioned a while ago about trying to keep the drugs off of the street and whatever. They're not, they're not doing their job. They go out here, they stop elderly people just for a signal or brake light, but they don't have the seatbelt on, and they get harassed. They get harassed by them, and actually, at times, in my opinion, we need a better force. And they're doing it. So I'm saying they're not doing their job.
Thank you. Dustin?
I believe they're underpaid and understaffed and underappreciated. And I do think they can pick up their efforts here in town, but I think it has to start with us, with the community, with the council, providing them with the support and everything they need to want to do a good job. Because if nothing changes, we're going to lose our police. And nobody's, and they're going to talk when they leave. Everybody talks in the police force when they leave. Hey, don't go to Mount Air, that place is this or that. And we're the ones that have the control to change them, what our community is and where it's going. And we need them, and it's hard to get them here. So I think we need to do whatever we can to train them properly, get them going in the direction we want, and see where they go from there.
Thank you. Jeremy?
I believe there is room for improvement with the current police force. I don't have firsthand interaction, knowledge, but I hear stuff. I see stuff that's posted on social media. What I don't see, what I saw two, three years ago, is the patrolling. I've got security cameras, I monitor them. I used to see them numerous times throughout the day pass. Now it's days, weeks before I see a police vehicle pass upon my house. I can't speak to the rest of the town, but I do live on a fairly busy area that has a lot of traffic. So I would imagine at some point, they should drive by, not to just take a look at my house, but just look for other stuff. There's abandoned areas where crime happens. And if they're patrolling and they see that, that's going to be more likely to be seen than sitting at their police stations. And I know there's cameras around town that they can monitor as well, but it doesn't show everywhere. They need to be out of the mark, they need to be patrolling and be seen, and be good ambassadors with the community, so the community can trust them. There is a lot of lack of trust in police departments right now because of the way the current situation across the whole country is. But when the police officers are out and involved in the community, that helps the community with their police department and that trust factor. So there needs to be that improvement, that trust factor back with the police department.
Thank you. We've ended, we finished our 20-minute questions from the people in town. So now you will each have two minutes to do your final statement. Oh, I'm sorry, you have three minutes for your final statement. And we'll start with Richard.
For my final statement, I want to build a strong relationship with all the city staff, council mayor, and also with the public. I would appreciate your vote to continue serving you all, the great people of Mount Air. I'll bless you all.
Thank you. Dustin?
Thank you all for coming out and coming to our council forum. My name is Dustin Kaiser. I'm running for the Mount Air City Council. And I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make this community what I know it can be. And even when we think we get there, that's when we still need to keep pushing and go further. And I would really appreciate your vote come November.
Thank you. Jeremy?
I want to thank you all for coming out. There needs to be improvements in this town and it starts here, that these people running at the table. It starts with the decisions made by these people, by the council members, by the mayor. And the changes need to be brought to improve this town. There needs to be infrastructure, police improvements, improvements to programs and areas for our children. And this is the town's job, provide your safety, provide your infrastructure. That is why we live in a town. If we didn't want to be part of that, we could, why would, you could live off outside of the municipality and protect yourself, worry about your own infrastructure. But no, that's part of that community, is that infrastructure, that safety of the town. And that's where we need to improve.
Thank you. Juanita?
I want to thank the audience for being here and participating with the questions that myself and my fellow candidates have asked. I am asking for your vote on November second because I would love to continue to serve you. I was born and raised here all my life and I love this town because it always has been my home. My decisions that I make on the council, on the city council, are the decisions that are always based on facts and what I believe is right for the town of Mount Air. Remember to vote for me on November second. Thank you.
Thank you all. This concludes this portion. And we're going to move directly and immediately into with the mayor election.